Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call, please?
Denison?
Here.
Whedon? Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
President.
Swam?
President.
You have a corner.
Thank you. Would I can make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, there's our support.
Money, I'll support.
Do we have roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this time I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Good evening, Fran Terry, sixteen three nine eight Ryerson Road. Oh, sorry. You got it?
I got you, Fran.
You can move that mic down.
You can move it around if you need to.
Or I could grow a little bit. I just had a question on um the board committees, commissions, and it's more to do with the budget that was approved last week. I went through it and noticed that the farmer's market has an expense side. They don't have an income side. And we do turn in all those proceeds from the vendors. And I just would like to know where that goes. And is there a way that we're gonna see how much we actually turn in to how much we spent? That was my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seen none. Let's move down to the consent agenda.
I'll move to pres- approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you there's support? I'll support. Do we have roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards. Uh, the clerk department?
Okay. I have a lot. Sorry.
Look fine again.
Uh, I'm gonna start with legislation, legislation wise. Um, I think the commission knows, but for the public, I am on the legislation committee for Michigan Clerks Association. Um, so I meet with them once a month. We discuss election bills that are coming through. Um, but I wanted to bring attention because this is an extremely important thing for Michigan Voting Rights Act. So we follow the Federal Voting Rights Act as now. Michigan is trying to place a M V R Act. Um, I am fully supportive of a Michigan Voting Rights Act. I am not fully supportive of the bills that have been presented to us. Um, we have been working on this for months. And just to kind of give you a little bit of an update on it, the biggest concern I have with the bill, while the stakeholders have been very easy to work with and trying to, the biggest thing is we are proven guilty right away as clerks and municipalities. We do not have, we can be accused, um, we have no right to defend ourselves, the secretary of state, and a court can say we did nothing wrong. We still can't do anything about it. It puts us in great liability financially wise. Um, they are making funds available at the state level, but to quote Dan, that would, that's still taxpayer dollars.
What, what is the bill that you're referring to?
So it's S B uh four oh one is the big one where they are making areas for protected voters. We've asked it to mirror the Federal Rights Voting Act. Um, I think it's taking it a little bit too much for protected voters. Um, just because the thresholds are so, so low, it's going to be extremely costly to us. Um, instead of ten percent or ten thousand registered voters, it's down to three percent and a hundred registered voters. So during census, statistically speaking, if I had somebody that wasn't English proficiency, we would have to provide notices. Everything would have to be in that language. And that I am completely fine with. I can do that on the VAT machine very easily. Um, it's just extra notices, extra work. The other thing is they were coming after us. If we missed a notice on accident, didn't matter on purpose, we could be sued up to nine thousand dollars and all of our lawyer fees would, we would have to pay for the states and ours. They put in a little bit in there saying, okay, we have one time to make an accident and we won't come after you. But I'm fine with protected voters. I want people to vote. If you know me, I want everybody to vote and nobody should be harassed or discriminated, anything like that. And as a clerk, it is my responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen. And you can ask my workers, that is, does not happen. So I'm a little bit nervous. And this is a very, this group is Republican Democrat clerks coming together. And they, we are all extremely nervous about this. So we've been working extremely hard with the bill sponsors to um work this out. There is a study, Senate Committee meeting on Wednesday that I'll be attending via Zoom, um, kind of see where they're falling. They're trying to push this through as fast as possible, and I think that's the problem. Instead of pushing it through fast as possible, let's stop, take a second, and do this right. Because we have a great Federal Voting Rights Act and we need to mirror that. So. The other one is the local terms of office. That will take effect after the twenty twenty-four election.
Before you move on to the next one, have you reached out to any of our local representatives to talk to them?
Yep. So we've been doing that, and I actually just talked to the new Buffalo Township clerk who talked to her, um, Joey, Joey Andrews. She was speaking with him earlier today because we had a meeting on Friday with all the clerks. And we're just concerned that it's going to put us in a very bad position where I don't get to prove any kind of innocence. If a protected voter comes to me and says, or a group says that you did this wrong, I have to put in a correction action plan right away. There is no working around with law. And that's where it scares me a little bit. Um, where if there was a problem, do not get me wrong. If somebody approached me and said, hey, this is an issue, I am more than happy to fix that issue. So there's just a little bit of putting it in law is a little bit harder to get around on things where it could be fixed proactively and said reactively.
And when we passed a constitutional amendment that was hocus pocus, and now they're adding to that? Is that what this is?
That's the big things that clerks are concerned with is because we're still implementing the middle of the last one. And now we're adding to even more and tying our hands on a lot of things. This is just, that's the big thing. There's a lot of little things that if you break, if you miss something, we're getting fined. If we do something this way, we're, we're going to court. If I decided I could, if I went to the commission and said, hey, I would like to go down to one precinct by law, I can right now. I have chosen not to because I don't want our voters waiting in line. Um, I think it's easier. There's protected class voters could say, well, you closed that um because of discrimination. They could sue me and the jurisdiction. And I don't have saying, well, I did that because we didn't have enough money to pay that many workers. It's not because of discrimination or anything like that. So.
So do you know where the, I'm sorry, I didn't look into this very much. Have you talked to Jonathan at all?
Not Jonathan Lindsay, no, no.
Okay, well, I will make sure I reach out to him because I have a rapport with him. And is this Democrat backed, or do you know where the money's coming from for the sponsorship?
So I, I, there's a lot of stakeholders and they have been absolutely wonderful to work with. And M C A, the Clerks Association, has kind of taken a neutral tone with this while M T A and M M L have outright said, no, we're not backing this.
M M L has gotten pretty aggressive about some of this stuff.
Yeah, we're not backing this because it, even like, so all the way down to public accuracy testing, where I have a hard time because I make my own test deck so that you can see it. I do it. If you don't know what that is, the state is now hiring a contractor to do that. And we've put it in there that saying, no, we can still do that. We can still, as long as it hits the provisions of law, we are still allowed to do that. So there's a lot of little things. It's a very heavy bill. It is extremely long. And you find little things in there that doesn't, yes, that doesn't make sense where it even goes against what's already in the constitution.
When are they gonna vote on it, do you know?
I don't know. It's still in committee.
Oh, it's still in committee?
Yeah, it's still in committee, but I'm just giving you a heads up. Like I said, if it mirrored the Federal Voting Rights Act, I would be like, yes, push it through. And it's not that I don't want a Michigan Voting Rights Act. I just want it to make sure it lasts. Like this is something that is going to be there, make it great and make it last. So voting, federal voting was what, nineteen sixty-three? We want something that's going to withstand fifty, sixty, seventy years.
Well, I promise, I'll read up on this, Calla. And I'm not bragging that I have a relationship with Jonathan, but I would, I got to know him before he got elected, and I've had some pretty good conversations with him. So he's a fighter. I mean, a governor absolutely hates him.
I don't wanna see nothing, I don't wanna see that not go through. I just want it done the right way. And that's where the clerks are. We want to see a Michigan Voting Rights Act pass for protective voters. We just want it to mirror the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, but local term of office on House bill, that's gonna affect you guys uh next year, which is great. I was in huge, big support of this one. So withstanding any charter provision, you're not gonna be able to take office until December first. Instead of, our charter says it's the next meeting. If you know, um, the last city commission meeting, um, election we had, we had one, one person win by one vote and we had a recount. The election was not certified. And I still had to swear that person in. So I, I love this. Because now we'll have a certified election even after every recount because it was like, okay, what if the recount comes back and the other person won? What do you do? So looking forward to that. That won't hit until twenty twenty-six for you guys technically. So looking to see that. City commission, if you're gonna run for city commission for the twenty twenty-four election, those petition packets are due back July twenty-third by four P M. I will have a notice in the mail in a couple weeks. If you have any questions about it, please come see me. Uh, voting dates for early voting and election day, August sixth, primary election. We have nine days of early voting. There's a flyer out in the um outside that's on our website. I am the chair for the South County Early Voting Site this time. So I will be down there quite a bit helping them. I'm doing all the testing for all the tabulators and wherever I can fill in. So. Absentee ballots, if you're on my perm list, um, you should be seeing those at the end of June, early July. If you want an absentee ballot, please contact me. I'll get you hooked up with one. Um, there is going to be an election panel. Dr. Patricia Moore is putting this together. I don't wanna take her thunder. So it's hopefully gonna be sometime in July. She's gonna put together an election panel, come and ask questions. Uh, look for that. It's gonna be at the Tin Shop Theater. We're gonna kind of do it, that, the panel, and then I'm gonna do my testing the next week. So if you'd like to come and watch me test, see what it looks like, so you can uh see it actually up close and personal, please come do that. Last thing I have is National Voter Registration Day is September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. I put that on there. I know it's like really far ahead. But I did join um that group. So on that day, I will be holding a voter registration day. They're sending me signs and stickers and all sorts of stuff. I don't know if it's gonna be at City Hall or I might go over to the Duck Pond and kind of do like a drive-by voter registration, um, trying to get all of our new people and our eighteen-year-olds registered to vote for that November election. So that's all I have.
That is a lot.
I had a lot, but I just had a bit, sorry.
Okay, moving down to new business expenditures. You have questions about expenditures?
I talked to Tim about most of them, but there was one I forgot. When they built the Fireman's Park, the firemen went out of their way because I knew some of the guys your age that they didn't want anything to do with the city, that they wanted to take care of that park. And I seen the expenditure for the mulch, and we paid for the mulch several years. And that was something the firemen definitely said when they got that Bell Park, that they didn't want the city to take care of it at all or have anything to do with it at all.
I believe that mulch was for Victory Park.
Okay.
I'll check on that, though.
Okay.
Yeah, because I thought Adams and Blaylock had, had got, had gotten that mulch.
Okay.
I, that's why I was under that understanding. And that was a while ago. Yeah, 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 yep.
Well, I squawked about it last year. Raised the same, so, okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
I'll confirm that, Dan, but I'm fairly sure that's what it was.
Does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I will make so- motion.
There's support?
There's, money, I'll support.
Roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to item B, the McCoy Creek Culvert?
Okay, we have before us tonight a uh engineering proposal for the McCoy Creek Culvert repair down on Days Avenue. And this proposal includes final design services, bidding and construction award, and construction administration services. There are several tasks in this proposal, and uh right now, the permit application has been submitted and is under review by Eagle Lakes and Streams. And so now we're ready for the next steps, and that's what this proposal consists of. There are several tasks. The proposal includes final design, including the sheet pile wall materials, reinforced concrete, and culvert cap details. A set of bid drawings will be prepared and provided. It includes a geotechnical investigation that will be performed, including soil, for soil borings and analysis to determine the subsurface soil and groundwater conditions. Recommendations will be provided regarding the design of the replacement walls. It includes bid document preparation with drawings, draft contract information, and technical specifications. It includes bid award and assistance, and that will be provided along with contractor recommendations when it's time for the commission to make award. It includes construction administration, including processing of pay estimates, reviewing of shop drawings and submittals, project meetings, and onsite inspections, along with the project closeout. This proposal is based on a time and material not to exceed basis with a cost of fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. When you take that along with the conceptual design, which was at twenty-one thousand nine hundred, it brings the total engineering cost to about seventy-seven thousand dollars, just under. And based on my experience, the fee seemed very reasonable considering it's anticipated to be about a one million dollar job. And that, that would mean the construction and engineering and design engineering would tally up to about seven point seven percent of the project, which in my world, I'm used to seeing that being the ten to fifteen percent range. So this fee seems very reasonable for the work to be done and the nuances of the project, considering you're working in the stream and of the uncertainties. Uh, so to keep the project moving along, I would recommend approval by this commission. And I take any questions on it if there are any.
What, what's our timeline again that we're thinking?
Well, the, the kicker here is the Eagle uh permit processing. But this proposal anticipates a six-week construction schedule. Once we get all the materials, shop drawings reviewed, get the contractor on site, uh, six weeks, which.
We still have to go out for bids. We still have to wait for the permits.
Yeah, yeah, a- after the bidding and the.
We'll be lucky to be done by September.
We'll be lucky to be done by next spring. Must be realistic. Because how long is, how long is it gonna take in Michigan?
They can't work in the spring.
I'm trying to, I'm not trying to set too quick a s- title. I think it'll be done by fall.
Because they got, I think from October. They can't work from like October in the water till May first.
And they've already applied for permits, though. I think that's a big part.
And, and I, and the Eagle representatives, they're, they're re- uh, they recognize the urgency of the project and, you know, trying to get it done in an expedient manner.
Okay, that's good. Because that's the only people I was figuring was gonna stip.
They, they seem to be very reasonable. We're, we're working with the Kalamazoo office and apparently they have a good reputation of being expeditious.
Yes, they do. I like that.
All right, well, I'll move to approve the McCoy Creek proposal for professional services from Aven Marsh in the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Is there support?
No support.
Roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Moving down to item C, Board Committee and Commission Reporting Restructuring. Consider approving the organizational chart for reporting purposes. I don't know if anybody has any input on that chart.
It was a big thing that you were hoping to get done. So you wanna kind of talk about the thought process behind what we're looking at?
Well, I think, you know, as you and I, actually, as you and I were just discussing, darn it, I can't get that thing to. I mean, one of the thing, one of my concerns is that we, we just haven't been getting reporting regularly. And much like Fran had mentioned in her comments, I don't know that we've seen how well some of these groups are doing because we never seem to get reports from them. And I just, I feel like some of these fell off when the D D A went away, and they've never really come back online, so to speak. So I was, I, it's really, I had, it was less to do with us sitting on the boards as it was just to make sure the boards were reporting to someone and making sure that we were holding people accountable. Not in a mean way, but like if somebody were to disappear from one of these boards, somebody else could come in, would have all the information, would know how to take over and keep the thing going.
It just amazes me. Oh, not in a mean way. Friends of Oak Ridge Cemetery is pretty much done, correct? So we can eliminate that?
Larry's on that one, right?
The Design Review Committee is pretty much obsolete. It's not followed, it's not adhered to. So it could be taken care of by the Plan Commission, the few decisions that have to be made. The meeting tomorrow night's been canceled for whatever reason. So it's not like they're overburdened or busy. Isn't the Plan Commission canceled for tomorrow?
Plan Commission was canceled.
Exactly. Um, the Fine Arts, I asked her for a list of everybody that's on them. I think they've got, the last list I looked at was like fifteen people on the committee. You don't know.
Fine Arts Council?
Yeah, we never hear nothing from them whatsoever. You're on that committee, right?
Yep.
And we don't have any of their finances. I know we put a lot of money into that building. There's eleven on this committee with three vacant spots, fourteen on a committee. Um, that itself is way out of line. We don't know, I never paid too much attention to it because I figured I had bigger fish to fry. We don't have a commissioner on the common committee. I'm not on any committees. I'll volunteer to be on the common, but I want water and sewer back if I'm gonna do any committees. I'm not doing any committees unless I get water and sewer back. It's just that simple. So the farmer's market, I would like to reinstitute. What I'd really like to do is look into the pros and the cons of reinstituting the D D A. I, I know you're very much against it, but I would like to have Rich show us how much it's gonna cost us to reinstitute it and how much it actually helps us in grant writing. He stood in here one night and told us we really need a D D A to pursue serious grants. The Main Street program is live Buchanan or Lib Buchanan. It's not a Main Street program. And usually the D D A takes care of it. The D D A took care of the common, the farmers, the plants.
It's on its way to becoming a Main Street program. Which opens up doors to an enormous amount of funding and resources.
So.
So regardless of what you see on Facebook, it's been set up properly. We have a statement from um.
This isn't from Facebook. This is from state experience.
Lib Buchanan is on its way to becoming a Main Street program, which will.
But it filed for an application and didn't get it, so it has to wait another year, correct?
No, we're, no, we're turning it back in as well. I think we're turning it in by August. I'm not sure.
Well, it's not a D D A.
No.
And I would really like.
The D D A will need a mission. So tell your friends to come up with a mission for a D D A.
They had a mission. I'm not here to argue with you about it.
I'm not arguing either. I'm just saying.
Yes, you are. There was a mission. It was very active. It was very busy. It was very good. But it got disbanded because past commissioners and past city managers didn't want it. And they wanted what they thought was gonna be a passive tax or income from the D D A. So I would like.
I'm trying to be polite, and the D D A is not on this. So let's go back to this and try and talk about how these boards report.
No, I'm not gonna let you distract that way because the D D A should be on this. I mean, it should be on this.
We don't have a D D A. It shouldn't be on this.
It should be on this because it overseeing all of this. It did half of this on us.
We don't have a D D A.
We don't even respect Barb anymore.
We don't have a D D A to go on there.
That's not what I'm asking for, though. I'm asking to look into it, Sean. Do I need to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I will make a motion that we ask Mr. Murphy to look into how much it's gonna cost us, what are the financial benefits, and what are the financial liabilities to have in a D D A? That's my motion. And I think you guys should second it so you can vote on it.
I'll support.
Thank you.
I do wanna talk about the other stuff, though.
If that has nothing to do with the D D A?
Right, yeah.
Me too. Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Roll call?
Denison?
Yeah.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Good. Now let's go back to this.
So on, on some of the discussion I've had on it, it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the mission of the common committee specifically is about using all of the space at the common and surrounding the common and all of those individual groups that impact that. You know, bringing them together so they're working more efficiently on how to use that space more cohesively. So I, I don't wanna make a vote on reorganizing just tonight, but what I would like to see is like, if, if the ultimate mission is, and I don't know, is the common committee, I don't know who's on the common committee yet either because I don't have that list in front of me, but is it, are we appointing members of the Fine Art Council? That, that they're recommending somebody up to the common committee? Same thing with the Farmer's Market Board. Is Pierce Mill, that's, is that, that's overseen by the Preservation Society, I think. But I mean, they're in that area.
But I, but you know, and I didn't, I didn't include them, but I think, and I, and what you're saying is correct. I mean, just sitting on the board of Lib Buchanan, what I see is um there's not a ton of, there's not open lines of communication. So like, we have all these events going on at the common. And we, we could be working together, but sometimes we're not because there's just no communication there. And I think it would be beneficial if we were all on the same page, working off the same.
Yeah.
Plan. So I think that would be beneficial for the common as a whole, that whole area.
What I'm worried about happening, um, and I don't think this is a bad thing for the mission of the org chart there, is, you know, when we made the decision to, for lack of a better phrase, downgrade what the farmer's market as an official board because of Robert's rules and posting requirements and meetings and all that, I think, you know, that group felt, you know, we did them a disservice for the amount of hard work they do. And I think all of us didn't intend for that, but we want each of those groups to know they have a valuable seat at the table at the common, and they're all contributing and valuable in what they provide to that space. And their input is needed to make that space the best possible space that it can be. And if we're under utilizing city assets today, that, you know, and, or spreading and work across a greater volunteer pool, we should be exploring that. And I think that's what you're proposing here.
Well, I'm not even, I'm not really even proposing anything. I just, it's important, I think, to have this conversation and to figure out, you know, again, just to make sure that each one of these groups is answering to someone, which ultimately comes back to the city manager. And, and he's aware of what's happening, how much money's being charged to these, you know, to the vendors, how much money they're making.
That's being accounted for. That makes sense.
Yeah, as I said, the accountability is, is what we need to be looking at, you know, as Fran, Fran's mentioned, you know, I mean,
and we're getting.
I don't think we've had that.
And for clarification, we are getting those reports um at the city level. It just hasn't come up to the commission and we don't show it in the budget. It's captured somewhere in there. Tim and I were actually just talking about that today, and it's, it is a real, we're, it's not like it's unaccounted for. They are doing the bookwork and submitting it. It's just, we're not showing it in certain areas, and we wanna see it, that's all.
And, and I don't even, I, I would probably enjoy beating this thing up a little bit more. I didn't even think about Pierce Mill and the historic preservation and how they fit into the common. So I, you know, I, I mean, I don't know that we need to approve anything. This is really, even if we keep the conversation going on how to.
I would like to see this act relatively quickly on it, though, and, you know, if that group can get together in the next thirty to sixty days. I know it's a little tough in the summertime, but.
I think Pierce Mill is exclusively written by the, or run by the Preservation Society, and that whole group pretty much does it.
It is, the only thing that I would, and the only reason I say that is I think it might be beneficial for them to know when, you know, like this weekend is a, is the Bluegrass Festival, um, and there's gonna be a bunch of vendors all over the place. And it, it's just, it would be good for them to know, to be on the same page and know when we're having those kind of.
Yeah, well, because like they wanna, they wanna raise funding for that new wheel, right? And there's, I mean, if there's people coming down there, whether it's the farmer's market, a play at the Tin Shop, a concert, like those are opportunities to expose.
And that's the other, that's the other thing that I'm not, you know, I, the Tin Shop, I mean, sitting on that Fine Arts Council, the Tin Shop's not, I'll just say it, they're not really effective at utilizing. I'll just say it, they're not really effective at utilizing that space. We could be using it for a lot more than just four or five shows a year. Um, like we've talked about, having veterans speakers and having the election thing down there. Um, having the Martin Luther King thing down there that we had. I think those are important and I think that by having them report to the Common Committee that has some people on it that are.
Part of that group?
Well, part of, they do some of this stuff for a living where they promote shows. I think Brandon's on there from the Chamber, isn't he? If you can, yeah. I mean, I think they could help promote the Tin Shop and, and make it a, a more usable space that gets more.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, Michael Rollin, four seven nine three, Toop Tree Lane. Um, I'm a co-chair along with Randy Hendrickson of the Common Committee. Um, you know, we started off just kinda doing the concerts, um, as, as many people know. And, um, that kinda led from the DDA. Um, one of our biggest donors was working with the DDA to do concerts before. Um, there was kind of a falling out and a lot of his money went away. Um, so that was where we started talking about endowment. Um, well, you know, your money, if there's money left over at the end of the year, what do you do with it? Do you just like kinda let it float in the air, you know? Committees, especially if they're not ran well, those dollars can really kinda trickle away in a lot of weird ways. And it was all about reporting for him. It was all about making sure that we had, um, every donation that came in and every outflow that went out. Um, and we've been very, very effective at that. Um, when we first started, there wasn't really a, a board at all. And we built that to what we have now that, you know, abides by the Charter of the City. Um, we work, um, the very first meeting we have at the beginning of the year is our true Common Committee meeting. We love to have them that way every time, but it just unfortunately, it's, um, hasn't been that way. And what that is about and why we can get people to actually show up to that meeting, it's 'cause the meeting where we schedule the shows, we schedule the events of the year. Um, and that's an important piece. So it's not so much that we have good attendance because people wanna be more involved in the Common, it's they wanna make sure that their shows and events that they're doing get, get their space. And we've been very effective at that too. Um, we've been able to, I mean, none of those meetings have gone bad. Um, we work very well. Um, in particular, you know, it's not always just who's playing on the Common, right? So you have like the Tin Shop, if we do the Shady Grove Fiddle Festival and on Saturday night they wanna do a play, that's not gonna work. They won't be able to hear a thing in there. Um, and then the same thing, you know, you do different events that make a lot of sense for uh, Pierce Mill to open up because we have a huge audience to help them drive their mission of, uh, preservation and to really showcase a, you know, a real treasure of our community. Um, those are things that, you know, unless they know that like this is a, a event that's gonna have a hundred people or this is an event that's gonna have three thousand people, that coordination, it kinda has to happen that way. And then the same with the Farmers Market. And, um, you know, we're kinda impartial on it. We have the ca- we have the capacity to, to do this and, and I think it would help, um, keep everybody together. Um, but the bigger thing is that if our board, we've said from the beginning, we want representation from all the, all the parties that have to deal with the Common. Um, we don't have it. Um, and if this was something that happened, it would help us in that sense that we would, you know, we'd have someone from the Farmers Market, we'd have someone from the Tin Shop, we'd have someone from Preservation Society and any other group that wants to be part of it. Um, and I think that's important because, um, we do a lot of work outside of that one scheduling meeting on a one-on-one basis, talking and working with the Tin Shop. I'll give you a great example. At Shady Grove Fiddle Festival, um, this weekend, we have a, a great guitar workshop that's gonna happen. And that is gonna happen in the Tin Shop, but instead of having that go through, you know, meeting minutes where we're knowing what's going on, um, that's something where we had to proactively go and we're very fortunate that Alice Crane is a wonderful person to have on that board that, you know, really communicates well. And, but, you know, it goes down to storage in the, in the Common. It goes through our cleanup days, it goes to all these things. Those are all coordinated things that have to happen and, and it's hard when you only meet once a year essentially. We meet regularly as a concert committee, sub, you know, subcommittee of, of the Common Committee. Um, but, you know, from that standpoint, I think that it would really benefit them to, you know, be able to take advantage of our reporting capabilities. Um, you know, the functionality that we can, you know, u- utilize the community foundation to be able to have, you know, effective meetings, give you guys minutes that are appropriate. So also Tim knows what's going on with all of this. You know, kinda the same thing, you know, when we went to do the, the cleanup, you know, luckily the, the Tin Shop had somebody and, and Alice that was able to help me know what they needed done at that, that event too, 'cause we didn't wanna just go clean up the Common for concerts, you know, it was supposed to be about cleaning up the area. Um, and, you know, right now, a lot of that, if I don't have someone, I have to go to Tim and if they don't communicate with Tim, then he doesn't know that either. And, um, so it's really just about, you know, effective communication and, you know, being able to get everyone on, on the same page where we can utilize all of our resources, you know, that endowment, same thing. Um, that's something where if other organizations have money to go into that, that's gonna fund future repairs to the Common. It's gonna keep, you know, money in the, in the till where right now, that's something that the taxpayers are paying for. Um, so that's a big piece too of making sure that gets funded. Um, you know, same thing, we have a, a Parks Fund at the Foundation, you know, that's, that's woefully underfunded. Um, those are things where if we had, those endowments were larger, we'd have evergreen funds to be able to fund some of these things outside of taxpayers. Um, so it's really important.
Do you think if you had a representative from each one of these things, you know, around the Common? One from Pierce Mill, one from the Farmers Market, one from, um, the Tin Shop. Do you have room on your board for those people to show up and? How many full-time members are on the Common Committee?
Library.
So we have, what is it, ten?
We have eleven full-time Common Concert Committee members. Whether or not they're there, present at each one. Everybody's a volunteer group.
Right. It would help us actually firm up things, 'cause one of the things we've done this year that has helped us tremendously is working with the Chamber and Liv Buchanan. You mentioned that before. They, they both have very different skillsets that have been very helpful. Um, and I can give you an example. Brandon DeJanes, uh, is a concert promoter by trade. That's what his job is outside of, outside of, you know, the work that he does for the Chamber. So he's been helping us negotiate acts. You've probably noticed in this year, I mean, we've always had good lineups, but this year is pretty extraordinary. Um, that's, you know, large in part by him. Um, and then the same thing for Liv Buchanan. Um, you know, a lot of people don't realize how important they are from a, from a volunteer standpoint. Um, when you go to Shady Grove Festival this weekend, you'll see Liv Buchanan people all over the place, you know, helping us make those kinda things happen. 'Cause any board, if it's ten, fifteen people, that's not enough. You know, you need to have, be able to leverage different organizations and we have two really good ones in those that have been able to helpful. So in my perfect world, uh, you know, a Common Committee for us and selfishly for the concerts, but, you know, non-selfishly for all the other arts that happen within the community. If that board had someone from the Foundation, someone from the Tin Shop, someone from the concerts, someone from Pierce Mill, all down that line, they're all representatives. They meet separately on their own, you know, the, all they have to do is have someone show up to our regular meeting to, to be their representative, um, to be able to tell us what they are. Um, what that would allow us to do is to be able to report back to you guys with where the money's going, how it's going out, um, all those things. They don't have to contribute to, to the endowment if they don't want to. They're gonna be, um, completely ran themselves. Um, from that standpoint, it would help us with board governance and, and we'd be able to help you, um, with that side of it. But past that, you know, not a lot of, would change on our side.
You have twelve members on the Common Committee?
Eleven.
So your quorum is six? So you conduct business without quorum? I mean, the thing about it is that's the reason why you lower your committee members to five. So your quorum is three.
We, we haven't.
So you can conduct business.
We haven't conducted business though, quorum. What do you, I mean, maybe.
But you don't need to, the whole point I'm trying to get across is you don't need to name them committee members. They're volunteers, they're helping. They don't actually have to have a title, you know, and that's my whole point.
Right.
I mean, Live Buchanan has got like eleven or thirteen, but their quorum is two. You know, bylaws, they can write their bylaws whatever way they want to, but that's extremely highly irregular.
Yeah, I mean, that would ultimately be up to you guys, but, um, you know, I think one thing to consider with that though is that, you know, as Patrick mentioned, um, so say we don't have standard representatives from all those and we start having to make decisions. You know, things come up where there's funding, um, 'cause I would assume down the line, ten years from now, instead of coming to you with all the different, you know, committees coming to you at all different times for different projects and you have to pick winners and losers, you probably want that to be centralized and we come to you with a budget.
That's how it worked with the DDA and that's how it's supposed to work with Barb now.
Right.
You have five members on that committee.
Right, which in that case.
Somebody wants something, you're doing your scheduling once a year. If something has something important, they make sure they know when you're having your meeting, they come and they present it and then you give it to them. I mean, if you mass all these people together, all you're gonna wind up is confusion and herding cats. And that's just from pure experience. And I mean, we don't really follow them rules in this city and that's part of the problem. How long has the Common been down? Thirty years? It's been there thirty years, hasn't it?
Nineteen ninety-six. Um, so real quick on that though, um, I'm not saying add to make the number of committee members we have larger. But what I am saying though is that when those decisions are being made, um, and this is just my personal opinion, I don't, I'm not speaking for those organizations. But if I was on one of those and another organization was making the decisions for how we operate without representation from our organization, I'd be pretty upset about that. Um, so from that standpoint, that's where I kinda feel like, I'm not saying necessarily we change our charter to be twenty members to make sure we have all those. But we have members that would happily step down and just be volunteers. We'd have a, a million ways to reorganize that to make sure that we can fit them into our committee, to make sure that, you know, when something's going on with the Tin Shop and they need a new roof and we're trying to figure out how to talk to all of you about it, that they're in that room to help us make that, that call for them.
Well, and it, and it works because Matt Pleasant serves on the Planning Commission and now he's the Planning Commission's representative for the Tree Friends. So he'll go work with the Tree Friends and then he'll come back to the Planning Commission and tell us what they're doing, what, what happened at their last meeting, what, what they have coming up. I mean, it's helpful and, and that's all I'm trying to get is.
Right.
People from all these different groups to all be on the same page.
Right. Yeah, and for the, and for the Common Committee, I mean, there's not really, um, outside of communication and building better rapport and, and, and relationships with those, those committees. I mean, we're clicking pretty good right now. I mean, we don't have, we, you know, we, we're not gonna gain anything from, from having this. Um, but I do think, you know, if I take off that Common Committee member hat and put on my Michigan Gateway hat, um, you know, we work in healthcare culture, or healthcare education and culture and the culture bucket's really hard to fill. And, and for us to be able to fund things, to be able to, um, bring cultural vibrancy to the community, um, we, it can't just be done through concerts. Like we have to have a Tin Shop that is, is operating at full tilt. We have to be able, you know, um, we need a new will on Pierce Mill. And, you know, is that something that, you know, the Foundation is gonna have to fund or is that something that, um, the city's gonna have to pay for? Or is that something that like we know is capable? Is that something the organization can actually fundraise and, and be able to come up with those things? Because, um, even from the Foundation's side, you know, we don't love funding operations. We wanna lift up these organizations. We don't wanna fund, we don't wanna make them sustainable just by giving them money all the time. And, um, that's something where I think a consolidation where there's represent, representative, um, you know, committee that people are making decisions together and we're talking about our finances, you know, you know, to, to the question earlier about where's the Farmers Market money come in and out, you know, that's something that is, is pretty standard. You know, I mean, if you said, who are your donors for the concert committee, I can give you a report that shows every single one of them and the amount they gave. If you say, well, what'd you pay for the shows, I can show you all that. You know, and that's something that I think every committee should have to do, but maybe they're not capable of doing that. And if that's the case, we're happy to help in any way we can.
As a co-chair, could I just add a couple of comments too since we're.
Come on up.
Uh, Randy Hendrickson, one six five, five two, Merson Court, um, nobody's logged more, um, hours out at the Common than me, at least in this room. And, uh, you know, thousands of events, volunteered thousands of hours. Um, so one of the things, and, and of course sat at this table for hundreds of DDA meetings, one of the things that I think, and I've talked to Sean about this a little bit and Dan hit the nail on the head, one of the things that the DDA did well with the organization was that we, these are, these meetings happen regardless, right? Um, because we had a paid staff member, we had a paid secretary and there was clear and constant communication all of the time. I can't tell you how many times I sat at this table and we had representation from each one of those groups here and we caught a whoops, like, uh-oh, we screwed up, we shouldn't have scheduled that, we better fix it before it goes live, right? Or hey, let's work together on this project because we have everybody at the table that needs to be here to get it done. So, uh, do I think the Common Committee is the right group for that? Maybe right now. It makes me a little bit worried that in the future if something were to change and we put all this stuff in motion and set precedence, that maybe that group is not firing on all eight cylinders and we risk some things. I guess my point is, is that unless we have a paid staff member helping or at the point of this somewhere, that I think that there's a failure point. And I, just a little concerned that we put a lot of faith in volunteers and I love our volunteers and we, we may be kicking butt right now, but I think there needs to be an accountability piece somewhere. Um, the city also has a really, um, has a lot to ri- lose here. You know, there's a lot of risk here. Our Common is our gem and everything around it is supporting that. And so we've identified some areas that we could improve on, some opportunities. We've looked at our strengths right now, so I think there just needs to be a master plan done. And that, I mean, maybe that sounds extensive and a lot of work, but I don't really think it is. I think we get everybody at the table and go, okay, what do we need to improve on? What's going well? Who do we need to have? Where are the missing pieces and go from there? So just a couple of thoughts in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could touch base on that too. I mean, all of our committees right now, they have to do with the Common, have a failure point. Um, you know, we're fortunate that, uh, on the, from the concert standpoint, we kinda have two failure points with Randy and myself. But I think if you, you think, really think about how all these committees run, you know, I always talk to my staff about, you know, being able to still operate if I get hit by a bus. And, um, these committees, as Randy pointed out, they all have these, these failure points. And that's where something, whether it's the Common Committee or, you know, that goes, you know, to again, a, a paid staff member to where that person, if they were hit by a bus, they would, someone would step into their place, um, that would be helpful.
What if we had like an open house or a roundtable where we brought all these groups in and had a discussion like you're suggesting, Randy? And, and try and figure out what works best?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, I think most, everyone would show up for the most part.
Yeah, I think if you get a posted meeting within the next sixty days, hopefully less, but that way it's a workshop officially. We've done that with, um, other things.
Mm-hmm, are you talking about just the, what's under the Common Committee or are you talking about everybody?
Uh, I mean, they, they can come, I mean, all groups can come and voice rights workshop opportunities so we can uncover it.
Well, I mean, really, really the, under the Planning Commission, it says ZBA, the Tree Friends and Design Review, that's really, that already exists.
Sorry, I get you. I mean, I think, yeah, centralizing it to the Common area, I think it's been the hot, you're not, we're not proposing any changes to any other area.
We're really not, I mean.
Well, I did bring up the point about the design review. And I did bring up the point about Barb. And I really, you know, the pr- the problem with everything that you're trying to do, you're trying to be nice and leadership doesn't necessarily have to be mean, as you so well put it, but you have to be a leader. And getting forty people in one room to talk about what they want, you're not gonna be any farther ahead than what you are right now. We have to make a decision and, and make stand by it. You know, we don't have to present it hardcore, but we have to say, well, this, what we're doing is not working. We think this is going to work much better.
I mean, but I think we've said that what we're doing isn't working, that's why we're having the discussion. And I would disagree with you because when we had that marijuana roundtable, we had a ton of people in this room and it was really productive.
We didn't do noth- what did we do?
Well, I'd hate to make a decision tonight, right?
I'm not trying to make a decision tonight.
Me either, that's what, well, and I would like, you know.
I'm just stating my opinion on having meetings. The marijuana meeting didn't go anywhere. We didn't do anything. We didn't wrap our arms around, we didn't get any money from them.
What the board composition looks like, you know, is it one from each place? Is it only a seven-member board? Is, who's the designated representatives for that? That's all a big deal. I'd like to finalize that all at the same time. Yeah, and a lot of these groups, unless they came or salt tonight's agenda, they probably didn't even know we were even having this discussion. So it gives them some time to get up, some information into us to weigh. Maybe there's something that says, this ends up being a terrible idea. I don't, I don't think that's the case, but, you know, it gives the opportunity for information to flow into us. And then we can say we had sufficient time to make a decision.
But we have commissioners on all these committees that we're talking about. So at the next meeting, this can be brought up or put on the agenda. So you've already, you've told the committees.
That's fine.
Get the blowback from them or you can get some decent ideas.
Being the leader that you are, what, what is, what are you recommending?
What I just said, make a decision. You wanna be sarcastic. I can get real sarcastic.
I'm asking, so what's your, what do you, what are you recommending?
To make, I'm not recommending to do anything. I'm just saying, let's not spread this out six months. I really wanna find out what the DDA and how the DDA, because the DDA was doing it. You've had confession.
Nothing to do with this sheet.
But it has a lot to do with what you're trying to do and it had a lot to do with redistricting and taking care of it. And you had. And you had five people on that committee. You had the clerk and you had the city manager there. You want to get sarcastic about leader? I got more leadership there than you're ever going to have.
Okay.
You know?
We don't have a DDA, is what I'm getting at. So, there's no room on that sheet for a DDA that doesn't exist.
The DDA would go right above the Common Committee.
We don't have a DDA.
It would go right in between Barb and the Common Committee.
I'm done.
What are you done with? You know, this is your problem. You don't want to talk to anybody that has a different opinion than yours.
No, that
You know, that is exactly it, and it's always been that. We don't have a DDA. You have eleven people on, okay, quickly, you want to do it quickly, but then you want to have a committee, you want to have a meeting with forty people in it. You're not going to get anything done quickly, and that's my whole point.
A DDA is not going to happen in a year.
You're not going to, all right. You're not going to have anything done in six months, doing it the way you're doing it.
What would you like me to do?
I would like to make a motion that we have a meeting posted to be held within the next sixty days for a workshop with all the groups associated under the Common Committee on that spreadsheet, and we can take further action after that. That's my motion.
I'll support.
Roll call?
Sure.
Reansky?
Yeah, I'll vote for it.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Public comment on non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make ready the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Jeanne Harris, three twenty, three twenty Bluff Street. I just wanted to come tonight, and I want to thank the city commissioners and Tim and Ashley and Rich and Mike, you know, for all of your support in recreating Victory Park. You know, if you guys would not have been voting, and Rich and Ashley would not have been so diligent in doing what they did, and including the north side, and, you know, wanting our opinions, wanting to know what we thought about what was going on. And this all started from the beginning with Kevin Barker and his sketches for the pavilion. So, I just wanted to come tonight just to say thank you for the support of Victory Park. And Saturday was just amazing. All the people that showed up, it just showed what, you know, life is better here, and that people really love the city of Buchanan. We had so much negativity within the last six or seven months. So, it was just really great to see everybody that came out and supported this event. And I really wish that the news media would have been there, which I'd have thought to call them, because they've only been coming for all the negativity that's been going on in the city. So, you know, anyway, again, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Jeanne Harris. You did.
Okay, Haley Jones, one four five three four Main Street. I just wanted to get up and tell everybody thank you who came out to Chunk's grand opening. We served over fourteen hundred cones this weekend, and it was amazing. That's it.
On a positive note, James Busby, Elizabeth Street. I was talking to Jeanne Harris earlier today. Yesterday, I was planning on relaxing all day. I had about twenty text messages and phone calls from Saturday. We got a lot of good feedback from people all over Indiana, Upper Michigan. And my message to you from them was to tell Buchanan and the whole city, thank you from everything that happened over the weekend. As everybody know, Victory Park was very dear to me, because that was my grandparents' property from nineteen forty-three. Tons and tons of people telling me what a fantastic job Buchanan is doing. Of course, I don't take no credit, because we have to thank everybody as a team. You know, Tim, Mike Baker, his crew, Harvey, you guys, the community who came out to support, the diversity from everybody that was there. And as Jeanne and I was talking earlier today, what can you not do when you work together? You know, we've had a lot of negativity, a lot of people who were being negative turned the corner. You know, a lot of people, you know, I was telling another friend of mine from Lansing who called me over the weekend, they washed it up in Lansing, and they were talking about all the good things that we got. This is only the beginning. I'm going to have a busy summer, because I'm meeting with a lot of people that I work with on foundations to help bring some more money into the city of Buchanan, not just for park improvements, but had a discussion with the Hanson Foundation about money for the sidewalk program. And as things go moving forward, I will be talking with Tim about that and a bunch of other things, and bringing things to the table for you guys. But this is just what we need to do to keep the thing moving, that support, love for everybody. No fighting, no argument, no name calling. Can't get anything, done with that. But that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Hauser, two oh nine Main Street. I am the vice chair of the Preservation Society, so I just kind of figured since we were talking about it, I would get up and say something. So, this Saturday, we have decided to keep the Pierce Mill open until seven o'clock to kind of see if we can get some people coming in. I've been down there a lot during the concert series, and we do see a lot of people looking around the mill. So, we decided to open it up and kind of see if we can kind of keep that going. So, we're maybe looking for some volunteers to come help do that, you know, and get some awareness out there for the mill will that we are looking to replace and, and kind of get things going from there. But I just kind of wanted to get up and say, and I would really welcome, Beth and I both have just discussed that we would welcome sitting on and putting in our two cents when it comes to this, because if we would have had this conversation, you guys would have known that we were staying open. I mean, we could have cross-marketed and let people know, and kind of see, even though we're just dipping our feet in here, you know, to kind of see what happens. So, but thanks for everything that you guys have all done. Thanks.
Again, Michael Rowland, four seven nine three two up Tree Lane. I just wanted to take a quick note, and I won't belabor on this, because it's already kind of been said. But this weekend, you know, for a long time, we've had so much negative stuff happening. And, you know, I had some family in town and took my kids downtown, and we went to Victory Park. I saw all of you there. Thank you for, you know, being there and, and being there with your feet, which is important. And thank you to Mr. Busby and Jeanne for everything you did to make that happen. That was incredible. It was, it was so wonderful to have my kids down there, seeing something that special, seeing that there's a lot of good in our town. And that's like every weekend, especially in summertime here. You know, as Tony mentioned, like, Saturday's going to be incredible at the Shady Grove Fiddle Festival. We have a nationally touring band in full chord that's going to be headlining a festival with four different bands, all types of workshops, and the amount of vendors that we have lined up through Live Buchanan is a lot, and very varied. Even a tarot card reader, all kinds of different things. And, you know, I try to more, as I get older, I try to look through the eyes of my kids and say, okay, well, what are they seeing in this community? And I just really hope that others in this community can start looking that way, too. That looking at saying, you know, okay, well, I'm really upset about this thing, it should go that way. You know, there's, there's a really easy way to, to get involved in this community. And I hope that when things are going bad, that we not only try to make sure that those things get fixed, but also double down in, in being who, what makes us such a great town. Why life is better here is because we have people like Mr. Busby and Jeanne that, that will go out of their way and make things better for the kids that are coming up in this town. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Any other public comments? If not, we will go on to city manager comments.
Okay, I'll be brief. Regarding our water sewer billing, I would like to thank the community for their patience and understanding on our water sewer billing issue last week. It was immediately addressed, and all correct bills were mailed out, and as I understand, most have been delivered already. We own it, but I can assure you that we are reviewing our procedures on the mailing and will provide additional improvements and oversight to prevent such incidents from occurring in the future. The front street retaining wall by the Hoven Funeral Home. Site survey work was performed last week, and soil borings for a geotechnical review are scheduled for tomorrow. These complete, completed tasks will be utilized for the retaining wall design and associated construction estimate. So, we're moving along well on that. As far as the downtown infrastructure project, we anticipate having our bond counsel, Baker Tilly, at one of our next meetings to present on the financial aspects of the project. At the following meeting, the legal resolutions and USDA loan acceptance documents will be presented for approval. So, that's all coming to the fore real quick as well. So, we're going to be real busy here over the next month or so.
Thank you. The only thing I might add to Tim's comments, to the public in general, is if we have issues like our water bill issue, it'd be super helpful if you would just call the city manager and ask a question before you call the news media to blow it out of proportion. That's it. Okay, moving down to commissioner comments. Commissioner Swam?
Yeah, a few comments tonight. Thanks for addressing water sewer, Tim. I know you guys worked real hard to get that addressed immediately. It's never fast enough from the public's eyes, but you guys worked real hard to get that out. I got my bill yesterday. I knew exactly what I needed to pay, so. Victory Park, the groups hit, hit it on the head already. It was an amazing turnout. There was hundreds of people there from all aspects of the city, ones that are here today, some that have moved away. All came to celebrate that together as a community. What a great event. The entire commission that's sitting here today was there. I've talked to Mark. He would have been here there himself. He's up in Mackinac enjoying a well-earned family vacation, but he, he did want me to send his regards for that. So, just, just a great way to capture what we can do when we all work together. And actually makes me think of our earlier discussion, how we can take what we learned from that and continue to do amazing things in the downtown district. And I, I really hope that every one of these groups embraces that opportunity to have a seat at the table to see how everybody else that uses that space can help them amplify their, their message and their goals. So, I, I, I am looking forward to how that workshop turns out. When we get a chance, I know we've been talking about it, there was some health issues with their organization. But can we get the Barton Group in here and give a, a status update on the DPW? I, I know there's been some other meetings, and I know we've been trying to make it happen, but I, I'd like to hear kind of how things have progressed from them myself. And then, next time we have a Barb group, can we get the disc-off stuff back on their radar? I know we talked about that as a potential low-cost opportunity to make an impact. Don't know if it fits, but if it's in the plan, which is a topic for them to discuss if we could. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Reansky?
First and foremost, I want to apologize to you for having to step up while you were on vacation. I did what I could with the people that I could about blowing a mouse hole into a volcano. I did everything I could, but I respect, I truly respect people's independence and their own thoughts. And the negativity, every time it gets brought up down here in comments, in public comments, or by commissioners, is just scratching that scab open. It's done. It happened in November. It's six months ago. It's a long time past. There was a lot of things that were done that were really wrong, but you might want to think about why things have been doing so well in the six months following what happened in November. Thank you, Tim. And I won't bring up Ben's name, and I'm looking at you because I'm just looking at you. It's got nothing to do with you. I got to look at you, or I got to look at the fly on the wall. As far as the, the Common Committee, you know, I'm not against it, but I was very much against disbanding the DDA. But I didn't see nobody coming down here screaming to stop. Nobody come down here. The chamber wasn't down here. Randy wasn't down here. Nobody was down here. Now, it's done. We lost all of that tax money, and that's what that was all about. And I can't, you know, I'm glad we're going to look into it. I'm very glad we're going to look into it. But there are things that leadership can do and we should do, but we don't do as far as dictating what has to be done out there on the committees. We don't report. I don't get any reports. I'm not allowed on committees, because I'm a bad commissioner. But that's okay. I'm still here for two and a half years, so. But thank you very much for coming in on your vacation and taking care of that. And
You're welcome.
You're going to have some more of them. I guarantee it. And the one thing I do want to say is it was completely unnecessary to do what the city did, because the final bill was correct. So, we spent the extra money, and I'm going to ask to say it out loud when we get the bill for how much it cost to print that second bill, because we didn't need to do that. We, you know, it was Facebook crybabies, and we should have just left them alone. So, thank you.
Mr. Money?
You do good sometimes.
I know.
Well, I don't think we can, I don't think we can talk enough about the Victory Park thing this past weekend, you know. It was a, it was a great time. I, I totally enjoyed myself. I got to see people that I haven't seen in a long time, and, and everybody else that was there, got to see and, and meet with folks. So, the whole thing just turned out great, you know, with the Buckteens weekend and, and a lot of our classmates and everything coming home. So, yeah, really, it really turned out well, and, and I know Jeanne and James, you poured your heart and soul into it, and it worked, along with the others in the committee that, that was there. So, once again, thank you, and keep doing what you're doing, because there's, there's more things that we can do. Last meeting, Dan, Dan kind of challenged me on a, on a little bit of a project out to the Sky Night Chapel as far as the stained glass windows go. Reporting back to him that got that taken care of. So, that, those monies will be directed towards that fund, and we're actually looking at a couple other folks who may help offset the costs of that, the stained glass windows in the chapel itself. And I still have a fellow that's waiting for an estimate on the doors, because I met with him, and they are in, in rougher shape than I actually thought. But this Mr. Fleming, I think was his name, Walt?
John.
John, yeah. Local resident. He's going to be doing a good job. Great job to Chunky's, from what I understand. You know, they, they stayed busy, kept Randy's parking lot full, and that's just a great thing to see. And we're probably all going over there for our discounted ice cream cones here after this meeting. Michael and Randy, thank you for everything that you guys do, you know, it was a great report with the Commons area, and I think, and I think we're going to progress and do something with that, you know. So, hopefully, we can get, get through that. And I just love the, I just love the water and sewer bill debacle. It was, it was great to see it all over Facebook again, you know, and in the news media.
It is Chunk's, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
I never know when I'm sitting next to him.
Yeah. Well, we're about Chunky's.
I know, yeah.
So, anyway, that's all I have. Seventy-three what?
Tubs of ice cream.
You don't have that many coolers, do you? We can put one on my house. You can store that ice cream in my freezer. Yeah, it's safe.
I want to apologize. I actually had asked the Barton Group to come to this meeting, and then I forgot to make sure it was on the agenda. So, they're coming to the next meeting, as of this afternoon.
I think, oh, yeah, I'm back in town.
Oh, you're, oh.
I leave on the eighteenth, but that'll be fine. I'll be back.
Okay. It wa, it was a great weekend in Buchanan. It was awesome. And Victory Park's party was, I, I knew a lot of people were going to show up, but I had no idea that many people were going to show up. And it was so much fun to sit around and listen to the old people say, you know, they were talking about Buckteens. We're all here, so everybody was talking about, we're having a class reunion here tonight, or we're seeing these people. It was great. We need more stuff like that in this town. And that's all I have. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask Tim how much that windows cost? Did you find out how much the windows are going to cost?
I have not got the estimate yet.
Okay.
He's going to send it to me.
Now, we just got to go after the Lions.
I'll, I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Reansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
It's market tonight.
He's in Mackinac.
Mackinac City.
Vacation.
Vacation. Can I keep this, Sean? Sean? Can I keep this?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Kelly's got that big one. She said she
Yeah.
She said she's gonna try and get it hung up inside the chapel.